Resume. So competency six is in domain two, which is about learning, promoting student learning and development, doing things, the things that we do, the strategies, the purposeful scaffolding of ideas and skills in order to get the students to continue in their academic achievement, but for special ed, it's both, it's academic achievement and it's also their building of their human skills as well, like who they are as human beings, their social skills, their study skills, life skills, possibly for for many of our special ed students. So the special education teacher understands and applies knowledge of issues and procedures for teaching appropriate student behavior and social skills. So this one is specifically focused on ways in which we can help students, remember, promote their learning and development, but specifically with their behavior and their social skills, which is a huge part of our support for special education students. I always tell all of my special education teachers that, you know, they do such an amazing and difficult job because they have to know everything that a traditional general ed teacher knows, but then they also have to know like the special portion of it, right? That being able to modify behavior, being able to identify behaviors and and situations that might trigger particular behaviors from our students and being able to plan for that and and so that the student can maximize their their learning and development in the classroom. So when you're doing the reviews of the of the competencies that I mentioned, competency six, I believe it was eight and twelve. Six, seven, we'll go back and look at it in a little bit. Oh, I'll look at it in a little bit for sure. But let's take a look at this. So applying knowledge of how culturally or linguistically diverse backgrounds of students impact behavior management and social skills instruction. So we we see what it says, but what does it mean? Applying the knowledge of how culturally and or linguistically diverse backgrounds of the students, how can that affect? How can it impact? The behavior management and social skills instruction. So it can impact, in impact and affect it. Both the behavior management and social skills instruction. Especially, you know, in in some cases where, you know, culturally there is a disjunct or it's it's what needs to be done is sort of different than what is culturally acceptable or expected or practiced in in the student's home life. So being knowledgeable of of sometimes there being differences, especially with special ed, you know? Even within in in two thousand twenty-two, my friend, her ex-husband, when her son was going through the special education projects, you know, through the R meetings, he had just been at, he's in elementary and he had just been identified and he had autism and his her ex-husband just really, he's brilliant. The boy is brilliant. He's wonderful. The first time I met him, I knew he was autistic, but I'm a teacher and I can, there's little tells like lack of eye contact and just certain things that I knew right off the bat that he was special and he was brilliant. But for some reason, the dad, I don't know if it's like a machismo thing, but it's like, no, my, there's nothing wrong with my son, you know, and and there isn't anything wrong with being neurotypical. And so that's sort of a thing that you have to explain to some parents. Sometimes about the the student's own disability because they either don't believe it and or don't accept one or both of the parents might feel this way. Now, we can't push services on them, right? They get the ultimate say. But sort of being able to explain things culturally to the parents so that you can work as a team as far as behavioral management and social skills instruction. So for instance, one of the things is my friend's son has difficulty making eye contact and then maintaining it during a conversation. It's something she works on. They were their special, you know, the special education teacher does, but they certainly don't force him. And if he doesn't know you, he's not going to be making eye contact with you. And so some people will push that on him and on 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 her, you know, and and with them with his mom, he's protected in that she explains to people. If someone's like, look me, you know, look, make eye contact, son, she'll explain to them, excuse me, you know, he's actually autistic and it's something that we work on. So if you could just, you know, be patient with him so that they know, hey, something else is going on here, but that's that same sort of protection doesn't happen with the dad, you know, he's sort of like on his own, just a normal kid. If he has a meltdown, which he will if he's triggered, then it's it's he's not protected or or circumvented from those things, but as special ed teachers, we certainly identify and can help and and minimize those things. So sometimes issues arise when the parents or the difference of cultural background or the linguistic diversity, cultural diversity of, you know, the student's home life could impact the behavior or or the social skills instruction. But as always, we try to work with with the parents as partners. So first and foremost, educating the parents, you know, for instance, they educated as much as possible. My my friend's ex-husband to, you know, for him to understand that to be neurotypical and and to not be neurotypical is is, you know, not what he was making it out to be, you know what I mean? It was just a difference of wiring. He is amazing and wonderful. However, because of that difference, certain changes need to be made in order for him to reach maximum potential. And that's what it's about. It's getting the students to maximize their potential academically, but not just that. Also socially, their ability to speak for themselves, you know, be agents of their own progress, because that's ultimately the goal is we want for all of the students in Texas to when they graduate, whether they are special ed or not, to be able to be agents in their own lives, in their own learning, right? To 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 know what they need to do and how to get the help that they need, if they need it, stand up for themselves, all that good stuff. Then you have B recognizes ways in which teacher attitudes and behaviors and personal cultural biases influence the student's behavior. So our own attitudes and behaviors, I don't think that that's something that's reflected on enough in education, but if you go into the classroom and you you have this sort of off-putting, your attitude is that, oh, you know, I don't care what's wrong with you. Everybody's gonna, you know, act the same way in my class. And so that right off the bat from from a special education standpoint is just incorrect. You know, we have IEPs for a reason, but there are teachers that think, oh, no, they're just babying these kids. They don't need a they don't need to receive a five-minute break if if I notice this, they'll be fine like everyone else, but but if it's written in the IEP, it must be implemented. It is the law. And sometimes we have our own personal biases that that we just, you know, bring to the table. And it's important to put those in check and to examine those, our attitudes and our behavior. You know, do we treat the students the same? And are we, you know, losing patience with kids when we shouldn't? Because it's literally not their fault. It's it's a a manifestation of their disability, right? So we want to make sure that that's something that we always continue to do, reflect, recognize how our own behaviors and attitudes affect the student, even if you're the student loves your class and you're always building that up. Let's say just in the, you're having a bad day and we're having a class conversation and I ask a question, a student that is always, you know, on top of things, answers wrong. And I say, oh, my God, Dory, are you serious? I would have expected you of all people to have this. Oh, my God. And now the person in that person's life, the kid, the kid's life, who's like, they get their sort of validity and sense of self from being able to do well. And now they just disappointed you and you're sort of those flippant comments from teachers. Sometimes, you know, we have to be more mindful, especially if we are dealing with special ed students, right? We're mindful of the way that we engage with them and the the attitudes that we bring to the table. I mean, a teacher's attitude pretty much dictates what their classroom is going to be like. And I'm forty years old and when I was a student in Texas, there were some teachers that I dreaded going to their class. It was like, oh, my God, I have, you know, Miss, what's her name next? She's the worst, you know, because she hated everyone and we all knew it. It didn't matter what you did and if you were good and it was this or or she had her favorites or he had her favorites. And so all of that is felt, it's it's fed into the environment, it's fed into our discussions, those underlying attitudes and behaviors. And our students are watching us, you know, kids learn through modeling. We know that better than anything. And so not all of them have the best models at home and around them in their in their out of school life. And so it is our duty to be mindful of our own attitudes and behaviors because the children are watching and they're going to mimic. And so if some, if Juanito, who has ADHD is, you know, being particularly annoying over and over again, and I deal with him in a way that's kind and compassionate, the students who are watching will also do that when he is, you know, having difficulties as well, and they will know how to deal with. It's it's a learning experience for everyone. So it's really important that that we take the time to recognize the way that we behave and the things that we think, right, are biases. So applies the knowledge, ethics, everything that, you know, maintaining, planning and implementing behavioral management and discipline plans for individuals with or without disabilities. So if there's a behavioral intervention plan, then you have to follow it. And like I said, I had literally spoken to teachers. I had one student just thinking of his seventh grader and, you know, and and he was a runner. He was one of those where that he would take off and had literally security guard running all over for him. And so one of the things, and it worked with him, was for him to get like computer time. And this was like, I don't know, in two thousand ten, this was a while ago, to play little like computer games if he came in to the classroom, you know, on time and and sat down in his desk, you know, and so there were teachers to say, I'm not going to reward him for coming into the classroom and sitting down. Like, I'm not going to do that. But you are, because it literally is the law. And so this is where we need to know the ethics of it. It's not about your personal feelings about whether this person is being coddled or not. Doctors, experts have identified a disability and then other experts have identified strategies to implement in order to create a and promote a a learning environment, an environment that that they're able to learn again academically, but they're also learning social skills. Like, listen, if you do the right thing, you get rewarded, you know what I mean? You don't, then it's not gonna happen. And then a little by a little. So it's important for us to remember to faithfully follow procedures, protocol, what's written for our students, whether we agree with it or not, you know, and and if we believe that it is not in fact helping, then that's something that you discuss in the R. You say, okay, even if he comes in, it's so it's not, we're not, we haven't worked past that. He just uses the computer, but you know, or whatever the case may be, but but you don't just stop doing it. You wait until everybody comes to a consensus and it gets changed. So knows, the next one is knowing the theories related to student problem behavior. So non-compliance, self-stimulation, self-injury, withdrawal, aggression, defiance. And so knowing the theories, like if some of these are happening, what what's going on with the student? What what is happening? And the basis for behavioral management, what types of things, what strategies do we use in order to help with those student problems, right? It's not like there's going to be a magic pill that we can give a student for non-compliance. That means that they don't like to comply, like, okay, Stephanie, go put your journal back in the thing. No, I'm not going to do that. Okay. Well, everyone else has put their journal back. And so it become, you know, that's one little example of non-compliance. Now ways and techniques to to reinforce good behavior and to get the student to comply or produce, you know, less problematic behavior. And so it's important for you to understand the different issues that students have and then the reasons behind that. And then what things can we can we do? Positive behavioral support, positive reinforcement, reinforcement, proactive strategies, reductive strategies that reduce negative behaviors. And so if you're not familiar with these, let's see. Let me do. I did it right. So Pinterest has some pretty good stuff on here. Let me go back to what we were looking at. Let's see what we have here. So reductive strategies, ways to self-regulate. Remember, we we, one of these, we'll go back and look at it. That self-stimulation, non-compliance, a lot of that has to do with an inability to regulate themselves, right? So here are some ways to self-regulate for adults and ADHD. Pinterest is a really great resource for any anything and everything, teaching, actually, anything and everything, everything. So let me see which other one, so I can show you real quickly what I mean. Oh, yeah, competency eight. So let's look at competency eight really quickly. So here you have applies not so that it's eight is about performance and language art. So phonemic awareness, just go here and look up, and that's the sounds, phonemic awareness activities. And so you could just take a look at the different phonemic awareness activities. So so here, phonemic awareness dot pages, that one's not as as fun. There's more hands-on ones. Let me look at it. Here. And this is phonemic awareness. W, eh, buh, looking at the individual speech sounds of a word. And so as you're doing your your close reading of of the competencies that I mentioned, you can go back and and sort of look up some of these to applies knowledge of the alphabetic principle and word analysis. So decoding, decoding is when you're able to look at a word and decode it, right? Understand what it means. What's the code? What's the message in that word? Structural analysis is decup, decoding by looking at the structure, right? Looking at the morphemes, the word parts, the prefix, suffix, root. And watch, I'll show you an example of morphemic morphemic analysis activities. One that I really like a lot is right here. And so this is a really great one that differentiates instruction. It's tactile, it's colorful, and the students can work either by themselves or individually to practice decoding and and creating words utilizing word parts, using those morphemes, right? Phonemes are the individual speech sounds and morphemes are the parts of a word that carry meaning. And so just really, this one is a great activity. You can kind of use this one for sentence building, for syntax. And so as you're going through your special ed through the this one competency eight, and then the other, if you find any of these that maybe you don't know what it is or you're unfamiliar, look it up in Pinterest and you'll see some really great visual examples and actual activities that are so great to use in the classroom to help the development of literacy. So we know from the science of teaching reading that students that have difficulty reading comprehension and have difficulty decoding, you know, their their phonetic awareness, phonemic awareness skills are lacking, though the pre-reading skills are lacking. So we need to go back to basics and they need to you know, get very strong phonemic awareness and phonological and phonemic awareness, like it really important for them to understand the individual speech sounds and the way in which that they're, you know, combined. Next is at the word level. So here it's at the letter and sound, then it's at the word level. You have to be able to know how to provide students with disabilities with systematic instruction that promotes their ability to apply the alphabetic principles and phonemic awareness to be able to decode words. And so we we work on their word, word building in many ways. We do structural analysis, decoding skills. We also do site word vocabulary. My daughter has it right now. Every week, her teacher sends home a group of like five or six words. I cut them out. We work on those ones and they go into the pile. And I need for those to be automatic, that automaticity with particular words so that reading fluency and reading comprehension is not hindered by her having to sound out and decode stuff that she should just be able to read on sight. So that building of the site word bank for students and and we have to, I have a special ed teacher right now who has ninth graders and she's having to do second grade phonemic awareness and morphemic awareness stuff with them because the it they're so behind in those areas that it really impedes their ability to to comprehend reading at the grade level that they are at and the grade level that they need to be reading at. So she's having to, you know, do many lessons on much of this stuff so that they can get to where they need to be for, you know, their ninth grade reading class or ninth grade science class, being able to read, comprehend, decode, think critically and creatively on their grade level. It is a really hard task for all students. And then add a disability and you get an extra level of complexity to it. So which is why, you know, we have to know best skills, know best activities to help them build in these skills because it's fundamental to their success. All other classes.
Like, I'm sorry, like to interrupt you, but I think those were some questions that I was a little confused in because I would read the question and all the activities sounded like they were really good, like all of them for what they were asking for. So
Well, they probably
researched, they're like, like phonology, phonology, and I went into isolation, blending, segmentation, addition, deletion, substitution. And then I also did the phonetics, morphology, syntax, semantics, and programmatic, I can say.
No, pragmatic. So and that's language socially. So there you could have a sentence written if I say, hey, that's my seat as opposed to, hey, that's my seat, you know, like if I said it in a normal way at a baseball game, what if I said it, hey, that's my seat. Yeah, tonation. Um, you know,
But I was gonna do like, that's all I can like, could have, like, I found, like, I found the definitions, I kind of like abbreviated them. But then when I went through the question, it was more like, let's say, like, something in the lines of like, well, which activity is the best for this student to have because they're working on phonemic awareness. So I would read all the activities and they sounded like everything that I had Googled, like, you know, like that, like, okay, they're working on breaking down the word. And they were like, okay, do they do prefixes and suffixes?
Okay, but prefixes and suffixes is morphing. Anytime it's part of a word part, phonological awareness is going to be like an example of phonemic awareness and activity that they they do. Like, let's see, beginning sound activities, let's find a pop it, let me try, fine. I'm trying to look for a really good one. I can't believe I can't.
And I'm like, I know it sounds like, to me, it sounds really like easy. But then when I saw the question, I was like, what?
So or or this is not a
Oh, yeah, like that, like, kind of like, wait, it was like one of the, and one of the answers was like, um, do they take a baggie home and choose and they put like, um, objects with the letter M?
Yes, that's phonemic awareness, that right there with the letter M, remember.
But they would say that, like, put it in the little baggie. And then they were like, or do they get a paper and write down, circle the one, the letters that are coming with an M?
Okay, so let me tell you, when they say to you anytime, what is the most appropriate or the best strategy? It is because put we're on a little red, throw out the red flag like in a football game. Flag on the play, they tell you most appropriate or best this because they've given you more than one appropriate. Both of those are appropriate. One is better than the other. Because having them look for something that's real is is kinesthetic, it's more, it's connected to real life, it's better than a worksheet and then taking like this butterfly and circling the bee. Yes, that's still phonemic awareness, but it's not as good as having them look for toy car, right? And putting car in there and the C and having them do the C there. So that it's a little bit, it's still there, both phonemic awareness, but based on what we know, how students learn, one is better than the other.
Okay, hold on, I'm kind of writing it down, so I won't forget it. Because a lot of the questions were like that, like, I was like, these two sound really good. And I was even kind of like how you taught me with the, okay, what are they asking you? Like, what is the question? Okay, what is the teacher like? You know, what's the goal? And I was like, okay, like, it's when I make awareness. And I was like, okay, so let's go back to the question, like, which one has like your keyword? And I was going back and forth and I was like, godly, like, I had several, they were like that, like, I had two answers that I were like, they sound really, really good.
Absolutely. The one that's more hands-on, the one that like connects to the student's life, you know, them searching out things is going to be more, it's going to resonate more with their learning than just a a handout, you know? Would do. But both of them are phonemic awareness activities and we would use both of them. Obviously, we can't always have them gathering things and putting them in Ziploc bags, but but for the purposes of that, that question, the best one would be that one. So remember, phonemic awareness is at the letter, you know, and and at the at the letter stage, letter sound stage. Blending and segmenting, beginning sounds, F as in frog, and then to take the different pictures that go with, you know, fish, feet, flower, you can have them, you know, categorize them, the different pictures with the different letters in groups. Here's a good phonemic, phonemic awareness, like, just study.
Okay, like, I I'm remembering one too, that it was like about culture. And I kind of felt like that one failed against competency six and competency eight in a way.
Right.
Maybe, I don't know.
No, I probably did. You're probably right.
Because it was kind of like for heritage. If, let's say, the teacher was making they were making like something for Christmas. But the kids are not native. And I was like, okay, so that means the kids are from somewhere else. And the options were like, what does she do? Does she make everybody bring a little, a little an object to share with them, with the class and their story of how they celebrate during Christmas? Does she tell them a story? Then she tells them a story about. Like a book about like everything like cultural, like showing the differences. Um, asking the parents to come in. And. The other one was like, give them that back background knowledge and reading a book about what they're gonna be doing, celebrating. There, like what she was planning on doing there. And I was like, I mean, I I was kind of like. There are little ones.
Okay, so I would do the the in little kids. We're trying to introduce them to as many cultures as possible. So I would say the best course of action would be to to read about the different ways. In which people celebrate, um, the different cultures. I think you said that was one of the the choices.
Mm-hmm, yes, like a book with like multicultural.
Yeah, multi multiple ways, you know, uh, and and that would be the way. And then you could ask the student, what ways do you celebrate? You know what I mean? Christmas in your own culture. So that one.
For me, okay, you're, you're, okay, see, that's what I'm saying. Like, to me, my turn of thought was like, oh, well, you get them with the book. You expose all the kids to get to know about different cultures. And like you're saying, like you follow up on that and then be like, oh, how do you do it? And doesn't matter whatever, and then you can add up stuff. But. When you, that's what I was saying, like right now that you're saying, okay, you go with the ones with more hands-on. To me would be, or everybody brings a little something. You know what I'm saying? Like now I feel like it could be either or. And I don't know.
That's true. You're you're right. I it would, I wish I could read the the thing and and what they want they have done, like, because if it's, it it just depends. If it's at the beginning of. The lesson or the unit, then you wanna instruct them and have them.
Well, I mean, the question didn't really tell you much. It was kind of short and brief and I was like, um, okay, like I need to know more. But that was it. And that's all like, okay, like, okay, work with what you have and started to scratch out stuff and kind of like keywords. I mean, I don't know if I got it right or I got it wrong.
Yeah, I I think that for this, because, um, the students don't have exposure. And if they're their little ones to a lot of different cultures, that, uh, because someone might bring in something like, let's say they celebrate Kwanzaa or something, right? And they bring in something Kwanzaa related and and the kids snicker and giggle because it's not Santa or an elf, you know what I'm saying? But that won't happen if you preface it with a reading before of all the different ways in which people celebrate. And then and then the next step is like bring in your own stuff.
I would, that would only apply for the little ones.
Yeah, I would say so. Yeah, I would say.
Say, we are, we're talking about a middle school student.
Well, like I said, if it were in the beginning of a lesson. I always, I, you always want to instruct with diversity. Children do not have enough instruction with diversity. They know what they know and that's it. And so part of our job is to directly instruct diversity. Within a mindful systematic way, which is another reason why I would choose before to begin with my, my reading or my whatever overview of like. How do all these like, because that's uplifting diversity, that's, um, exposure to differences. And then making connections between the diversity within the particular classroom. But I see your train of thought and and not for nothing, these people, they pay a lot of money, they pay writers a lot of money to be tricky. When they, when they field test questions, they're not just field testing to see, oh, are these questions too hard and no one can answer them? They're also, if they're too easy of a question and scenario, they also don't make it onto the test, you know? They want it to be like a sixty, forty, seventy, thirty, back and forth type thing, where they know people are gonna get tricked a lot of the time. I'm gonna save this little one because it's, um. Actually quite good. So, uh, there are so many really, really, really great activities for, here's your. Quick and so to I was, where did it go? What is happening now? Oh, my goodness. There it is. Um, isolation is the first. We begin here. It's simple. It goes from simple to complex. And these are all the different, oh, my God, this is a really great one. I'm gonna.
Like that one, I drew it out. I have a, I made a, like a binder with that one and I went over all. I had examples next to them. So like I did go over that, but I didn't. Like when I would look for activities, it's kind of like they're all like a little bit mixed around. So I was like, eh, okay, I don't want to get it wrong. And I still try to look into it, but. Once I I was reading it, not seeing it, I was like, okay, I don't know. Like see the prefix one, like that one, I'm pretty sure that one I got it wrong.
And so prefix already, you know, that's not phonemic awareness, that's morphemic awareness. So, uh, morphemic.
And I, right now that I was talking to you, like I already didn't, you know, like, ah, like I already have written it down.
Um, and so.
Like for phonemic, I put that it was the sounds or system of the sounds for the morph morphology. Forms of words or, and I even put prefix, affix. And then for syntax, the sentence, the way it's written or clause.
That's right.
And semantics, it was the meaning of the.
Yeah, absolutely. The meaning of the.
The way that tone to me, like I was trying to remember like that, like the tone that you put into it, cause it's different from when you're saying, they're like, okay, you bring me this. Or when you're ordering somebody, they, hey, bring me this. Okay, I try to remember like that, but honestly, I didn't even get none of that. That's all like, really, I studied all this. I even went over the nouns, pre, uh, pronouns, verbs, adjectives, adverbs. Propositions, conjunctions, interjections. I did get some questions on the. Levels of proficiency.
Okay, yeah, for sure. Levels of proficiency for ELL learners. And so, um, we have beginner, intermediate, advanced and advanced high. And even with our, our, our non-ELL students, they have a different English language proficiency, right? Their oral language proficiency, like, uh, like I'm saying, my, this intern that I'm working with, it's special ed. She has ninth graders that are at like almost a seventh, second grade level, even with their ability to talk about things. She said their vocabulary is very, very basic. They have a very limited. And so. Very much like the same, we would be the same strategies that we'd, we would use with an ELL student. So too will she use those same strategies to continue to build their language development in in the three and excuse me, three. In the four different areas. So in the listening skills, speaking skills, in the reading skills and in the writing skills. So that the students proficiency, um, is increased.
And that's always gonna do, okay. I had questions there that I doubted myself too, and it's like. A lot of them, it was like, well, if they're an intermediate, what are you using? They would like have, you know, more really good strategies. And I was like, wow, like some of them I did understand, but there were some on there like, I don't know which one, cause all of them sound good. But now that you're saying, I've been getting a lot, well, I did see a lot of the like, which one's the best to use for the student and they would describe you the student. And I was like, okay, and some of them telling you like, it would tell you like, oh, he's a beginner. Um, and I was kind of like, okay, he doesn't have any language. You send me that one, I printed it out.
Yes, excellent.
And I did go over that one and kind of like summarized it like a little bit in some areas, cause it was a lot.
It is a lot, but these, this is what you need to focus on here. Tells you, these ones here, like this one is for listening, uh, this one's for speaking and this one's for. Uh, reading and writing of it. So but the, but these are the four main, like this is why I like it so much, cause it's, you know, it's hard to take all of what we have to know. And to like apply it and break it down. It's a lot of reading, a lot of knowledge. Teachers are the real MVPs of like literally all society. I'm getting off topic, but so this breaks it down really well. These are things and you'll see on one side, beginner and intermediate. Typically, we get questions about beginners and intermediate. Because it is they who need the most support, right? With it, they're the ones that eat the most linguistic support in the classroom. And even though. Even though our special ed students, I mean, some of them are double, they're special ed and they're ELLs. We, um, which means that these apply naturally, but even the ones that aren't ELLs, the ones that are native English speakers. And they're in the special education program, many, many, many slash all, like ninety-nine percent, point nine percent of the time. The ELL strategies are best strategies also for your special, your special ed. They're gonna help them increase their. English language proficiency, much in the same way we would do with someone who is coming from another language and has zero framework. So we're rebuilding that framework, even though they're native English speakers, going back. Because our, our ELL students, they have to learn phonemic awareness. They they have to learn. How how words are are are, um, made, right? The different speech sounds. Because especially those coming from another, um, country and speaking of the language, they, different languages have different speech sounds, right? So English has speech sounds that are indicative to English and and we teach those via phonemic awareness strategies. So this is really nice because it shows you classroom activities you can use specifically to help beginners and intermediates with speaking. Teacher supports you could do to help them with speaking and what we should see the student as far as like an outcome, like what, what will they be doing while we're doing this? So there's gonna be non-verbal responses such as pointing or gesturing when they're beginners via speaking, right? So they're not gonna have language. That is what we should a little bit expect, expect. May illustrate their response or understanding of content. May illustrate it, meaning they might draw it, because they don't have the words, but they certainly have the ideas. And that's something that we should be okay with. It is something that is natural and it is a normal student outcome. So what we should see of the students is here at the bottom, what we can do for them here and what activities we can, um, help to increase. Their proficiency. This one, the same, uh, for, this one is for reading. So, um. Topic-related adaptive text, simpler language, linguistic support. Books with a lot of pictures, tables and chart. Picture cards, concrete models, models where they can see it. You're showing them language, show them a real thing. And a really great example is the one that you just, the one that we just spoke about, right? The one where you said the question asked them to like, get. Something from their house, that's a concrete model. Fight for phonemic awareness. You you understand what I'm saying? Like, so if they go find a little something for each letter, then that is a. Model, yeah, absolutely. So that is that strategy or that teacher support in play for special ed students. But it's something we would also do for beginners. So i- is there anything, um, it, anything?
The competency twelve, what was it about?
Competency twelve?
Yeah.
Let's take a look.
I'm sorry. Can I think we drifted?
We did. I'm a drifter, trust me. And then like I'm having a lot of, um, medical problems right now. It sucks. Getting older really sucks. I'm I'm forty. I know. I'm forty right now and I've had, I've had five kids and I've been pregnant six times. I had one miscarriage. Um, between baby number three and number four, yeah. Um, but I wouldn't have all the children that, I mean, I wouldn't have the kids, particular kids that I have. So I wouldn't change anything, even though it was very difficult. But I think it took a toll on my body. And so now I'm like, my body's all crazy. And I'm, I'm, I don't know, but, um. Covid and what I'm experiencing now, um, like I might need a hysterectomy. So all of that, like, it's messed with my brain. I'm telling you, sometimes I, uh, forget like an actual word. I was concerned, I was talking to my dad and. My dad doesn't want to hear anything bad. So he's like, hey, please, that came there or whatever. I'm like, no, seriously, dad, when I'm talking, I'm like, words are my life. I don't forget words, like I have a master's, you know what I'm saying? Like words are like, damn. So if I have the difficulty finding the word for toothpick. Like hello, something is going on with.
Well, I don't know if you heard, but covid makes you, um, what did they say? You could get like mental fog.
Yeah, like cognitive defect. Bad. I feel it so bad that I'm like, I just, I, it worries me. I feel like a stroke victim or something like, cause I. And I don't like it. I don't like to be lost for words or not be able to find the exact, I mean, for me, words are like. Like an artist that paints, you know what I mean? That like the different colors or whatever. And so to, to not be able to particularly choose them. Words I want to say is very irritating to me. And I have experienced it so much since covid. And like I said, I'm experiencing other stuff. So, um, it's.
It's a lot.
It is a lot. It's a lot. So every day that I wake up and I'm feeling good, I'm like, thank you, Jesus. Like, thank you, Lord, for making me feel good. Competency twelve is about the special education teacher knowing how to communicate and collaborate in professional settings. And this is something that like, all teachers need to be able to do, but for special ed, oh my God, it's so much more important. Because you guys, I'm always tell everyone, all teachers are the real MVPs. And then, but there's like levels of sainthood or whatever. Within the education system and special ed, yes. Special ed teachers are like at one of the higher circles of of heaven or whatever, because they just have to do so, so, so much more. And 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 honestly, there's more accountability for special education teachers, right? You guys have like this like legality hanging over you to implement strategies and supports. And communication effectively, because if the communication breaks between any of the branches of communication of the, you know. For the student and it impairs the student's learning, then then you could be faulty for it. You could be held liable. So the special education teacher is gonna deal with students with all sorts of disabilities. And that means that they're gonna be also dealing with parents, advocacy people, um. Doctors, therapists, other support groups. The community, like you would reach out to community members, trade has to reach out to community members.
There is one question that I was like, I didn't know what to answer. It was like, if. Like they, apparently the teachers were making like a bias. Like all the kids are like, kind of like, spentness speaking, they were being spent like, oh, they need to get tested. Oh, they need to get tested. So the teachers kind of had like, uh, um, like they were gonna have a development day that they could inform the teachers. They could have a meeting for them. They could send a flyer. I don't know, I don't want, like three. But I was like, well, the flyer sounds pretty good to kind of like remind the teachers, you know, like. Okay, guys, like this is what you can look for. And then the other one, uh, I was like the developmental, what's it, professional development? I was like, that's pretty good too, because it's like a refresher for everybody and everybody gets to hear it. But I'm like, I don't know.
Do you know if it was at the beginning of the year? Because that's actually excellent practice with a really good school, like a really, really good school in the beginning of the year. Because we have new teachers, we have teachers from other school districts that come in that are new, you know what I mean? That don't. The types of support. And so it's really good and it is our job to do professional development. So you might think, oh, a flyer is better, but a flyer is very important. So it's better to offer support in a tangible way where you're sort of like instructing the teachers. You have that professional development, because teachers have a resource among amongst each other, right? General ed teachers have a great resource in their special ed department and 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 likewise, you have great resources. Like if you have students that are having difficulty with reading, you don't have to just stay with like whoever you're a co-teacher with. If there's the re, in the reading department and there's somebody there who is like a phenom of reading, go to them and say, what strategies can I use to support in this way? So there are all of these, um, resources on campus. And so it's important whenever possible to professional develop each other. And so if it is something that's like a. And you said that there, that there was an issue, was there an issue with the campus?
Or like, like all the, all the teachers or, uh, there are a lot of kids are getting referred to special. They were more like. Um, I guess they were beginning beginners ESL.
Yeah, so they were ELL students and that, that's. Yeah, so they were ELL students and that that's a huge problem. And it's li- we we don't understand it because I come from the valley and like I grew up bilingual, so I don't understand you confusing someone you to, because I can talk to them in Spanish, you know what I'm saying? And I know their level. But if I have no, which is that so few of Americans speak more than one language, like when I taught outside of the valley, I had never been taken out of my class before to translate. But I'd be called out by the principal and then be called out by the, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, I teach language arts and I'm I'm going in there for like this sixth grade conference with the with the counselor and the principal so that I can translate. Um, and so that there's a lot of misunderstanding with people who do not speak a second language and they will automatically see silence or non-engagement. And and nobody's gonna engage with like, dude, if I don't understand you and I'm in it for like fifteen minutes, like I might stop listening at minute sixteen, because I literally don't understand what you're saying. That is misconstrued as um a deficiency somehow or a disability. But those of us who who acknowledge the steps and and language and can speak to them, you know, in their home language and many times, you know, because one of the largest uh second language is uh our first language for us for ELLs is it's Mandarin and Spanish. And so we recognize it and and it might not be something, but it happens so much. There's so many non Spanish-speaking teachers, non other English-speaking teachers who will misunderstand and uh inappropriately or mistakenly identify a language um proficiency issue as a special education. And so it's really important that that teachers understand the difference because they have to be supporting them, period. Like you can't just say like, oh, they don't get it because there's special ed, blah, blah, blah. No, no, no. Like we're doing the the ELL strategies. We are supporting them in their language, blah, blah, blah. And so I would say the having a, because there are so many and you cannot, you cannot be sure that a flyer will do the job to uh and reach who it needs to reach. If I have you there and I'm doing the whole shebang, you're gonna get what you need to get. I'm gonna make sure of it, you know? So I would say that is the best course of action and.
So it would be kind of like a class. And then after that, let's say like a professional development, like a training.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, so family assistance is really important. And and you know, and that's what I'm saying. Teachers are like freaking saints, so like literal saints on the planet, because not every family and parent on the, for the purposes of the exam, they're all gonna be great and fantastic and like
Oh, yeah.
with you or whatever. Yeah, because it is a, but there are literally some people who shouldn't even be parents and they have kids and you have their kids and you you're their only, but you still have to work with them and validate their concerns and support. Create create an environment where they feel like partners towards their student success. And many of them are not gonna be doing the right thing, you know what I'm saying? Like, so you'll have to sort of like gently nudge them in the right direction. Um, eh, you know, to help you build those positive behavior outcomes, to help build their social skills. If they're not getting the same sort of instruction at home, it's gonna hinder your progress in school. So communication and the ability to 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 not only, I hate to say this. Not only instruct the students, but instruct the parents, but like in a nice way where you're teaching them how to so sort of foster more positive behaviors eh within there uh without seeming like a jerk or like you're, I know what's best. You're doing it wrong. Like that's never, even if they are, that should never be like the way that we attack it, right? So it wa- which is why it's so important that you guys have such amazing communication skills, because you guys had to have a lot of really, really difficult conversations with a lot of different people, you know, um not just with the parents, but you have to collaborate and you have to consult with other people with regular ed teachers to sort of give them the lowdown like, hey, I know you think the ADHD is not a real thing and blah, 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 blah. However, and you have people who are part of, I don't know, like they might be part of Scientology and they think all all mental illness is like i- is fake and it's constructed so that there could be blah, blah, blah. And you have parents that believe this and then they have their child. And so you you have to be able to deal with a lot of different people and to communicate messages, like for instance, you speak to the speech therapist and then ha- be able to sort of um relay what that progress is, what their directives are to everybody else on the team that is focused with that student. That includes parents. That might include that in for sure includes all the gen ed teachers. Um, the coach, the counselor, whoever, you guys are like the web, the hub for all of your special ed kids. And think of a special ed kid like an octopus with different tentacles and they might need different arms of support. You are the person that keeps clear communication, because the student is not going to keep track and or communication of their various arms of support. But they all need to be on the same page. You are the person that keeps them on that same page. I'm sorry, Doris. I'm gonna have to let you go because my little one is feeling sick. She was sick yesterday. I took her to the doctor. I know and she's here and she she has a feet. Yeah, she feels like her head hurts or and stuff. Okay, momo. So I'm gonna.
I think we've already been for like an hour and.
Okay, excellent. So you continue with that and and if you need anything, just let me know. I'm available via this same link. Um, from nine to eleven on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So if you wanna just pop in, ask me a question, um, please do.
Okay, I will. I scheduled for next week, so hopefully.
Excellent. Yeah, well, I will see you next week.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Awesome. Thank you so, so much.
Hope you feels better.
Yes, thank you so much. Bye bye. Bye, baby. Mama, you're okay. You're okay, my love.